Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have the prayer and pledge by Mayor Protim Ricky Gonsal.
With the large prayer, please by your head, and the Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen. Please place the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roco.
Mayor Protim Ricky Gonsal.
Present.
Councilmember Brooke Markot.
Here.
Councilmember Marlon Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember David Broussard.
Here.
Councilmember Deidra Ledbetter.
Here.
Councilmember Deedee Johnson-Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Dustin Swier.
Here.
Thank you. Item one, public comment. Do we have any comment cards? Oh, we do? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bell.
Two comments.
Two comment cards.
Brian Gotrow for the Clicquot franchise agreement.
That's not on our agenda tonight. That will be at the next meeting. No, we only go on items on the agenda. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Michael Bell for Agenda Items 3D.
3D and.
Beef.
Four.
And 4B.
Double hitter.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Okay. 3B, I would just like to get a good understanding about the concession stand at the Pepper Plecks. It's pretty is. I would like to know, how will that work? As a nonprofit organization that we have, the Felicity Foundation and others, will we have the right to get the place to sell goods? And as a nonprofit organization, or will we have to go to Mr. Freeman to get the permission to do so? Or will we be allowed to do the same? Let's say we have something that we are scheduling to raise some money for some worthy cause, and we would like to rent the facility. Will it be open for that? Will it be open for us? Other nonprofit organization? So that's what I would like to know, you know, at the end of the meeting or now, maybe you can tell me.
When we get to that item, we don't go back and forth.
Okay, no problem, no problem. Okay. Let's see. 4B, the Boys and Girls Club, I'll make it short. I was born and raised in that western area, and I think it's a wonderful idea because the kids need things. But I would just like to know, would it make, will it cause a problem? Or will it take away from the programs that we have now, present for the young kids? Because if that'll happen, we'll be defeating the purpose, and I think it's a wonderful thing what you're planning. I just don't want to lose what we have there now, because I'm sure you know there isn't that that much. But there's a lot of organizations that are doing some positive things, so I don't want them to lose that opportunity because of the Boys and Girls Club. I don't want these two good organizations fighting amongst each other, you know. So I would like to know, maybe, you know, at the end of the meeting, let me know what's going on. I would appreciate it. And thanks very much. Happy New Years, people.
Thank you. Happy New Year. All right, item 2A.
Acceptance of the minutes of December 20th, 2022, which will publish on January 8th, 2023.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mayor Protim Ricky Gonsal, and a second by Councilmember Marlon Lewis. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Item 3A.
Public hearing regarding the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development's proposed closure of the Deer Street Railroad Crossing.
I need a motion to open this public hearing.
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Deedee Johnson-Reed, and a second by Councilman David Broussard. Is there any public comment on this item?
Did we give a comment?
Yeah, let me make sure there's no public.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
I see nothing from the public, so you may go ahead.
I just want to say, of course, this is in my district, the Caroline Street Crossing was slated to close, and it basically was a choice between Caroline Street and possibly Deer Street. Just want to make it clear that I'm hopeful that they don't close any crossings because it does impede traffic whenever they do. However, Deer Street is a less trafficked area, street in town, if they would have to close one. But I would hope that, you know, some of the residents on the street would have been here to voice their opinion about it. So I'm asking if there's somebody out there who wanted to say something, you know, give me a call. But this was the time to come and actually voice your opinion about closing that crossing, if you live on Deer Street. That's all.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir. Mr. Broussard.
It's gonna be an issue, a little bit of arms and lights up at Deer Street, they're up and working. We used federal money to put those lights up way back, back in 2005, when I got some money from Mr. Vitter. And it's gonna be a big question. It's at the state level being asked, who's gonna spend? Who's gonna, I don't think the federal money want to come, federal want to come back down and spend more money to take those arms down and put them back at Caroline. But that's just a question about who's, what, is it the state? They're talking about even the city coming up with money. That's $200,000, so we have to see. That's gonna be a big issue, and I want none of them to be closed. That's just, that's just opening Caroline and keeping arms and lights at Caroline. But there's gonna be a big issue when it comes down to play, what money's gonna be used? Because the federal won't come back and give us money to remove them and go spend $200,000 and put them back at Caroline. So there's an issue there, but I'm with Ms. Deidra. I don't want to close any of them. But when it comes down to play, we got to answer that question.
Yes, sir. Anybody else?
I support Ms. Ledbetter as well, and, you know, whatever she needs for her district, she knows her district. So I stand with you as always, signing the letters and all that kind of stuff, you know. You know your district.
All right, well, thank you. Now I need a motion to close our public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Motion, who made the motion? Councilwoman Deedee Johnson-Reed, and who was the second?
Mr. Swier.
Councilman Dustin Swier, thank you all very much. All right, 3B.
Ordinance number 2022-27, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute an agreement by and between the City of New Iberia and Blue Line Solutions LLC for the installation of automated speed enforcement systems within school zones in the city limits of New Iberia.
I need a motion to open our public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mayor Protim Ricky Gonsal, and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Markot. Is there anyone from the public to discuss this item? Hearing seen none. I need a.
Can we comment right now?
Yes, ma'am, we did it on the last one, so yes, you can, or you can wait till we go to that item.
Yeah, let's wait, I'll wait till we go to that item.
Okay. So seeing no public comment, I would ask for a motion to close.
So moved.
Mayor Protim Ricky Gonsal, and a second by Councilwoman Deedee Johnson-Reed, thank you. Now we go to 3C.
Ordinance number 2022-28, authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a cooperative endeavor agreement by and between the City of New Iberia and the Boys and Girls Club of Acadiana related to the expansion of the Boys and Girls Club at the Weston Park Martin Luther King Jr. Community Center.
I need a motion to open our public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Marlon Lewis, and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Markot. Is there anybody in the public to discuss this item? Seeing no comment, and I'd ask you to please give me a motion to close the public.
So moved.
Second.
Mayor Protim Ricky Gonsal, and Councilwoman Marlon Lewis, thank you. 3D.
Ordinance number 2022-29, authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a cooperative endeavor agreement by and between the City of New Iberia and Freeman's Food and Furniture Incorporated related to the sale of concessions at the Louisiana Pepper Plecks.
I need a motion to open our public hearing.
Motion.
Councilwoman Deedee Johnson-Reed, and Councilwoman Brooke Markot. Is there anyone from the public to discuss this item? Seeing none, I would ask for a motion to close our public.
Moved.
Second.
Mayor Protim Ricky Gonsal, and a second by Councilwoman Marlon Lewis, thank you all. All right. 4A.
Ordinance number 2022-27, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute an agreement by and between the City of New Iberia and Blue Line Solutions LLC for the installation of automated speed enforcement systems within school zones in the city limits of New Iberia.
Do you have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Deedee Johnson-Reed, and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Markot. Is there some discussion on this item?
So the last time, last meeting, we talked a little bit about this, and quite a few of us had questions about the contract. And so I guess I'm trying to figure out, so tonight we have public comment, and then we have, we can make this motion. How do we know which items are actually going to be negotiated and put in the contract? I mean, how do we, how do we close the loop on this? Because I know I sent you my thoughts, but I don't know if anybody else sent any. But how do, I guess I'm trying to figure out, how do we, we know that the things that we thought were important are in the contract? And we don't get to vote on.
That they will always be in the contract, but I'm bringing you the answers tonight, like I said.
Okay.
My goal is to read the question and give you the answer that I got. Now, you also sent me some more questions at 11:37 today. I'm not gonna have those questions.
No, I know.
I sent them as quick as I could. I sent them as soon as I got them. They're in Kansas, so I didn't, and the guy wasn't flying in again today. So I don't have those, but the ones that I got, you know.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was in Atlanta, didn't have my notes with me.
But the ones that I have, I thought my job tonight was to read each question and give you each answer, so that you have them.
All right, I just, you know, trying to make sure that we're all in agreement that these things go into the contract.
And we're not gonna always get everything we want, but we can talk about it.
Agreed.
So whenever you are, once everybody comments or whatever, then I thought, oh, I can do it now. I would read each, you know, question and answer.
Okay.
I wanted to do it like a play, and I wanted Laney to read the questions, and I was gonna read the answers, but Laney told you don't want to do that. So I guess I have to read them, right, Lainey?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, you didn't like that idea. I thought it was cool. Or we could have tipped turns, you know. Well, hey, look, I need her. All right, the first one, we need to have them remove the first, the right of first refusal. They said no problem, they would remove it.
Perfect.
That's a win, okay? You don't win all the time. We should not pay transaction fees for any citation we process. They will remove that.
Excellent.
That, you're doing good. We need to determine if there's markup on the transaction fees. There will be no transaction fees other than a processing fee to process credit cards. That is a pass through to the credit card for the processing charges, so.
Okay.
We need to have them add the split for the late fee in the contract. We can add language clarifying that.
Okay.
I don't have it yet, but they'll add it.
Okay.
Who has the burden of the maintenance of the devices, okay? They have the maintenance on it, so that was good. We need to understand additional services. It's in the contract, I found it, but I will read it. The additional service section allows the city to purchase equipment services offered by the company that are not part of the photo speed program, such as additional cameras and surveillance, which we're not gonna do.
But there's, when the guy was here, the reason why I asked that question, Freddie, is because when the guy was here, I asked him about that additional fee, and he said it was for an additional picture.
Right.
And he said that is not part of base services, that actually is part of the advanced services. So it didn't read that way in the contract, so that's why I was trying to get them to clarify that for us.
Right, because he was trying to also, in-car video systems, body worn cameras, video, evidence storage, automated license plate, LPR system.
Right, it's just that there.
Right.
There's something about that, maybe when you send the next set of questions, you can ask that one again. Maybe in a different way, maybe I'm not, I wasn't clear.
All right. How often do they upgrade equipment? That was one of your questions, because, you know, it would be in place for five years. They said it was in the best interest of themselves and the city to have the best equipment possible, and they will continually make upgrades as, you know, it's available and with no cost to the city.
Okay.
So they would upgrade equipment. Similar, your other question was, what if we get better technology? They said as a new, as new, better technology is developed, BLS will replace the equipment at no cost to the city.
Excellent.
So basically, you know, on this one, it, everything that we brought up or that you brought up, you know, we got answers to.
Okay.
So like I said, the ones from today, I'll have to get answers to. I do normally negotiate all of our contracts, but I kind of like that, you know, we're doing it this way, it doesn't bother me at all, so.
Okay.
Anyway, but.
And I apologize, I finally had a chance to look at my notes, and I'm like, okay, wait a minute, I had, I didn't give them all the questions because I didn't have that with me in Atlanta, so.
That's cool. Any else?
Nope, I'm excited to hear that they're gonna put a lot of that in there. That was my goal.
Good.
So from what I'm understanding, according to the questions, only the first two have to have edits to the contract. The rest I remember seeing in the contract, correct?
Yeah, most things were in there, but we got some clarification. And what wasn't in there was like the new technology. There are a few things that we can add in.
There's some edits, there's some edits, yeah.
I mean, there are some adds. It's not as simple as not adding anything.
Yeah. Excellent.
Anybody else? Any other discussion? I know that we had a question, I try to answer our questions.
Did you want to read the other questions so that everybody would know, just in case? I want to know if you brought them with you.
I think I did. I didn't have the answers. You brought them in, Laney?
I got them.
What's that?
Yeah, I realized I hadn't copied.
I think the N-Star.
Here.
Here we go.
You got it? Okay. He's got it, thank you.
Okay. I should make you read them, but I will read them. Let's see, if you have my notes. You wanted to strike a clause, it stated that they can assign their financial rights to another company. Like I said, I have no clue what they're gonna respond to that. You wanted to remove the three-day of receipt that the city has to turn over fees it collected.
Because to me, it's a burden on the city. I mean, three days? I mean, they get 30, so we ought to get 30.
I mean, I gotta make deposits every day. Per the auditors, we have to make deposits of money we get every day, so three days is actually kind of lenient, if you want to know the truth.
Well, I mean, that's a deposit, but now we'd have to deposit and then turn around and write a check. So my thing is, that's a burden on us.
Okay, I can ask them, I don't, you know, they were trying to protect their cash flow, but we can ask them.
That's to get some interest payments on it, too.
We should require them to allow us to send email messages to them as official correspondence. Well, I know that the chief is gonna be the one point of contact.
Okay.
I would rather it, if that's okay, be instead of my staff or whatever, I think it should be our police chief.
No, I just mean, we had to send them something. It shouldn't always have to be a letter, certified mail. We can actually send them an email and be official correspondence.
Yeah, yeah, and I think that's fine, but I think it should come from the chief.
Yeah.
Just to, so that we don't have a bunch of cooks in the pot.
No, no, I just want them to say that they would accept it.
All right. Let's see, are we going to provide a file, or will we have to create a spreadsheet and export to send to them monthly? And I will ask that. How much time does it require for us to install the system? That's why we need to get this moving, because on the ones that are on state highways, they're not gonna start the laborious and long process of fooling with DOTD until they have a contract.
Okay.
But the, the problem is, you know, there's always delays with equipment, everything else, but the big problem, I think, is DOTD. So as soon as we approve this, we're gonna try to sign it quickly so that they can get going fooling with the state, because I do think that's gonna take a while.
Yeah, all the permits.
You know, to get the permits and everything and get all the equipment, how long do you think, chief?
Eight to 10 months.
That's what I thought, too.
Okay, because, I mean, in the contract, it said we had to have a project manager on our side, so I don't know who's our project manager, but.
Well.
The project manager falls to be me, but it's them, they take control of doing everything with DOTD on the, because they already have done this previously.
Yeah, we just gotta bird dog them.
Okay.
You know, just to make sure it's moving, because once we do this, I want to get it in place.
Absolutely. Okay.
Excuse me. Is there any other questions or comments?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Let's say Dasbit Elementary is one of the school zones that gets a camera. Is it just one camera? And like, where would it be? And I don't know if chief has.
No, it's gonna be in both directions, so I have two.
So it'd be only on Dasbit Road, not Santa Clara?
Only if the, the volume of speeders coincide with the study. In other words, if there's, there's not enough people speeding per se, then why would you put equipment up to slow one car out of 500?
Right.
So they would put it on a highway where you're having the most problems.
Okay, gotcha. So most of them will be on highways?
Well, most of them, I mean, it could be a street.
Just depends on the study.
Depends on the volume there, because if, it's, the biggest thing is where your kids are being picked up.
Yeah.
So that's the traffic you want to slow down.
We say Santa Clara Speedway for a reason.
Well, but it's a Santa Clara Speedway during, because understand, we're focusing on school zones during school zone hours.
Right.
To say that speeding is occurring overall on Santa Clara Speedway probably is more overall, a different, a different scope.
I sit on that car rider line on Santa Clara, and the cars just fly through, and it's supposed to be 15.
And if it is, then what they're gonna do is, and they already started this, they put what they call these little armadillos that do a speed assessment, and they, they actually clock the number of vehicles that are passing that area, which you saw in the last study that showed up, and then they show how many cars speed during those times. So if Santa Clara is one of those streets that show that the volume of cars that are passing, you know, 30 to 80% of the cars are speeding, then that's gonna be a spot where they're gonna want to put a speed enforcement camera.
Okay, so it's possible for them to do it?
Yes.
On two different roadways for one school zone, or would they not?
No, they can put, no, they'll put it wherever there's a problem, they'll put it. So it could be in two spots in one school zone, yes.
Gotcha. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Yes.
Anybody else?
Yeah, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
They're going to all schools in the city limits, right?
They're gonna do a study of all schools in the city limits. That doesn't mean.
They not get them in the city limits?
If they don't have speeding issues, they, they won't get them.
It's, I mean, the study's like this, I mean, like, again, if you have 10 cars out of 500 that are speeding, is that a speed problem? So what they're looking for, and what we're looking for, is to slow down amount of traffic that puts kids, at kids and cars at risk. Is those 10 cars something that we can control on a different level during certain times? You know, whether that's police car, or whatever that is, to slow those 10 cars down. Now, if you're looking at a volume of 100 to 200 car speeding, that's different. Now we gotta look at, we got a bigger speed problem, now we need to do something on a, on a radar, but speed enforcement to slow people down. So it just depends on the amount of cars that are speeding during those school times. So I, I won't say no, that not every, every school, every school could get them. But it depends on what the study's gonna say.
We're only talking about it.
Because what we're gonna do is, they're gonna present like they did, like Laney showed the last meeting, the two schools they did the study for already, that had an assessment for the five days, the five-day window they showed. They're gonna do that same thing in every school in the city. And they're gonna come back to me and show those studies, and I'll get with the mayor, and we'll kind of go from there, getting your thoughts about what that is. Of where we put them.
And it's gonna be, they're gonna do the study over multiple days, right?
Yes, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But this was the start of it. The five days you saw, those armadillos are still up.
Okay, cool, okay. I just didn't want it to be one day and then.
Yeah, that wouldn't be much of a study.
They needed several days.
Anybody else?
I'm gonna put it on the word speeding. Chief, and I meant to call you about this. If y'all get a chance, try and put some guys out there where those guys doing construction at, man. They don't respect those green vests, man, I'm telling you, man. It's sad, man. I'll call you and give you some streets that are affected with that. I know this don't have nothing to do with the cameras, but as I mentioned, speeding.
That's what I'm here for.
I know, chief. Thank you.
And can we get some work construction sign, a road work sign?
I didn't want to open this.
Where the roads, where the roads are being repaired?
Yeah, because they're flying through there.
We call for that in the project spec, so we can, that's just a call to, to bear on habits, and saying, you know, I need you to enforce that.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Councilman Broussard.
By being there every day, it'll help a lot of the car riders, car drivers, cars that are leaving school, picking up their kids, dropping them off, buses trying to get in and out. They zoom through there, and we have a hard time getting in and out. That's gonna cause a wreck right there in itself. So not only the speed, if they can slow it down a little bit, it gives time for some of these vehicles to not create a problem about trying to get out of the schools. So we thank you, sir, for bringing that up. Ms. Deidra asked you to, we thank you, sir, for following up on this, Mr. Dubble.
Anybody else?
Yes, ma'am.
We are doing private schools also.
Yeah, because it still falls in the city streets.
Okay.
Where people are, yes, absolutely.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, because we're including St. Edward's, Catholic High, Highland Baptist, all of our private schools do.
Okay, okay.
Cool. Anything further?
Just a comment, most of your trouble gonna be on those state highways, though, Santa Street.
Not necessarily.
Really?
Not necessarily, no, because I'm gonna tell you, Dasbit got some problems, and so does North Lewis.
North, yeah.
Now, I realize it's a highway there, too.
North Lewis is a highway.
But what do you think about it? Hopkins, Johnson-Hopkins Elementary. Johnson-Hopkins Elementary got some issues, too.
That's all, that's all state highways.
Well, I guess Hopkins, I consider more of a street for me. I mean, it's, you know, gets the neighborhoods, but that's not saying it is. I mean, we, I mean, we're gonna look at all of them.
Right. The only one that's probably not a state highway.
The volume of cars are higher on state highway, obviously.
Right.
So you're gonna have a higher volume of cars. But that doesn't necessarily say that, you know, because actually, Ms. Mark, I mentioned a good deal on Santa Clara. Santa Clara is a street that we do have problems on, because I do get calls like she does about people speeding during school, school hours, and, and other times, too, but.
Yeah.
So yes, to answer your question, no, that, that's not just, I mean, obviously, they have the volume on state highways, but if there is more than 50% or 40% or better, or 30% better for that matter, speeding, it really doesn't matter whether it's only 200 cars and there's 100 speed, and that's still too many. Because you're risking, you're playing roulette with people that could potentially get someone hurt, killed.
Right. I know Lombard and Field Street are turning into some speedways, man. Speedways, I'm serious, and a lot of kids.
No, no.
A lot of kids walk from school down those streets. You know, I know that's.
I know we're getting off topic, but with that said.
We do that often.
We, we've had, we've had some additional hires and some stuff, so we're getting ready to do some traffic stuff on, on the alternate side of that. So the mayor's aware of that, because we're putting a couple of, a couple also signed to do traffic details again.
Anybody else?
I think it'll be great on Peson, because I know, I live down the street from Peson, and people fly down that street. We need to slow them down. They're gonna hit a kid one day.
And Peson's one of the ones we're focusing on, too.
Yeah.
Then if nothing further, I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Madam Quick, 4B.
Ordinance number 2022-28, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a cooperative endeavor agreement by and between the City of New Iberia and the Boys and Girls Club of Acadiana related to the expansion of the Boys and Girls Club at the Weston Park Martin Luther King Jr. Community Center.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Marlon Lewis, and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Markot. Is there any discussion on this item?
Yeah, ma'am, I would like to, you know, have you, what, and the council whoever knows anything to kind of address with, what we had, you know, asking public comment.
Oh, definitely, definitely, I got it down.
Conflicts or what have you.
Sure, I'll be glad to.
And the benefits.
Yes. I can't say there won't be any conflicts, because they are gonna take over the teen side, and that will be their home. They will service kids from that area and that community that would be going to our park anyway. It's one of the reasons that we bought the school, that we bought, bought Park Elementary. We plan on doing a senior citizen center in Park Elementary out of two classrooms, because they don't have one currently at the park. And we are talking to Boys and Girls Club, and this is gonna kind of help me seal the deal. But we're gonna do a computer lab at the Park Elementary that the community would use, and we would partner that with Boys and Girls Club. So the area in the teen center that is now like a little library, a little computer lab, that will be enhanced and be right basically in the park, because what we did by buying Park Elementary is add on to Weston Park. So that function remains. I can't say that there's not something that happens in the teen side that won't be able to, because Boys and Girls Club will be there every day. I think the benefits of what it does for our community and what it does for those young kids far outweighs. And I think the addition that we've added of the grounds of Park Elementary that now becomes the park, the fact that we'll have some police presence there, because they'll be doing training, the fact that we pick up that one wing that becomes part of the park, that takes the place as it can of that teen side. So I think we've kind of thought about it of how, yes, it will change, but I think that over time, it's going to work out that there'll actually be more activity at Weston Park. But it will change. I can't say that it won't, because those kids, that will be their home. If you look at what the Boys and Girls Club does at Center Street, and I've been there a few times, and I know most of you have, too. I mean, that becomes those kids' home, and they are there every day, and they are there for hours. But I think it's well-needed, it catches kids at a very young age, there are many. There are many programs that Boys and Girls Club has promised us, anti-violence programs, anti-gang programs, plus all the wonderful things that they do. And I think that that is, uh, an area that is just, that attention that we're gonna bring, I think is gonna be positive. And I think that, uh, it's a long-term commitment. We, after you give me the authority to negotiate, I negotiate the contract. We took some ARPA money and have put, plus some other money that we had pledged prior to go ahead and renovate that area. They, they're in the process of changing the roof now, which was the first step before we could do anything. If you don't have a roof, you don't have anything. So, that roof has been leaking for years. They're in the process of changing the roof. My plan is, if you, you know, approve this, we'll be signing the contract, and our architects have already kind of done the beginnings of a study, and they will be ready to hit the bricks and, and get that done, so that we can bid out the work. Uh, Boys and Girls Club went from zero to a hundred. We met a couple of weeks ago by phone, and they're like, we, we want to come now, we're ready. They want us to do a ribbon cutting. Uh, I said, well, one step at a time. I gotta get a contract in place, so that I know this is happening. So, to answer your question, will it change? Yes, sir. Will I have to shift some things to the park, uh, building? I know I will. Uh, but that's kind of my take on it, and I'd love to hear from, you know, the rest of you, because we've been talking about this for a while. Yes, sir.
You know, like here, we're gonna appeal, approve, because I, I, I think that's a great idea. I mean, because it's the access for the kids in the... They gonna still have the other side open too, I found that out, as well.
Oh, yeah, yeah, definitely. They're not leaving Center Street. We, we are gonna be blessed for a community our size to have two Boys and Girls Club, which is really a rarity for a town our size.
That's right, because I think, you had mentioned that early on, because there were talks about closing that when they moved and everything there. And I remember you saying, what about the kids in downtown?
Exactly, yeah. So, the kids in downtown are gonna be okay.
Boys and Girls Clubs, they specialize in programs for youth.
Yes.
I mean, the city don't specialize in programs for you.
We're getting better, but, you know, we have all talked repeatedly for the six years I've been here, we don't have enough to do. This adds a whole new element of professionals.
That's right.
That know what they're doing.
It was birthed out of that. And listen, I don't want to get in trouble, because I think Heather and, uh, Krista do a great job, especially with basketball and stuff like that. That's gonna still go on. Basketball is still gonna be exclusive to New Iberia Park, uh, Parks Recreation, right?
And if the Boys and Girls Club want to use the gym, they have to schedule it around our program.
Right, okay.
In other words, they can use it. They can use the playground, they can use the gym, but from the beginning, it was clear, and it'll be in the contract. They have to schedule that, because they don't want it to conflict with any of our recreation.
I, I think they're gonna add value, man. Any, any conflict, any conflict is gonna be washed out to the benefit of the kids.
I think so.
Uh, one thing I thought about, though, I remember they used to, now that the, a lot of people stopped renting the building because of the roof leaking.
It's been...
And they moved into the city park and so on and so forth. Some of the bigger balls, Knights of Peter Cleaver Ball, and I forgot the other one, uh, moved. And so, now that won't happen, because they, they gonna have that side, side closed off. But, I mean, I, you know, I'll give up a party for the kids.
Well, that, that was kind of, you know, what I thought as well.
So, I mean, it's, it's, it's a good, it's a good deal, man. I know the Boys and Girls Club, I know the family that, I know the Fabro family, Rachel, Tommy, all of them, they've been involved in that. One of my employees, Carol, was a big, big, big dealer of Boys and Girls. I think it's awesome, man. I, I can't wait.
Councilman Broussard.
Uh, we took away the dare program years ago. There's a good outlet right here with all the adults in these, uh, Boys and Club, Boys and Girls Club. Maybe to bring a little program in every once in a while about that. It brings professionalism on these kids, you know? So, it's a good idea to have this, since we don't have the dare no more. You know, they're really pumping in those kids' minds, leave it alone, don't touch it. You know, it's dangerous now more than ever. So, it's good that we have this at least.
Man, not to double dip, 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 but I wanted to say, the, the money, the program money is also coming from Boys and Girls Club, right?
Oh, yeah, no, we, what we're doing is renovating the space for them, okay, and allowing them to have the space. But they are funded by themselves for their programs.
Right.
Yes.
We did put up some initial money to, for the refurbishing of it.
Well, we didn't have enough. We, we asked them to come, and we had pledged fifty thousand dollars, if you remember.
Correct.
And then, that wasn't enough to do everything they needed, and then we're using some ARPA funds. But they didn't forget about that fifty. It's still in the game, okay? So, it's the fifty plus the ARPA money that we dedicated. But all of that goes into renovating the space for them. But they fund their own programs, they pay for their own staff, they pay for their programs. It is. Anybody else? No?
Yes.
Well, then, if there's no further discussion, I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank y'all. I'm excited. This is, this is gonna be something really, really positive, really good. All right, uh, four C.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash twenty-nine. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a cooperative endeavor agreement by and between the City of New Iberia and Freeman's Food and Furniture Incorporated related to the sale of concessions at the Louisiana Pepperplex.
Do you have a motion?
A whole second.
Motion by Mayor Protim Ricky Gonsal and a second by Councilwoman Deidre Johnson-Reed. Do we have discussion on this item?
Um, can you address the concern that was brought up by the citizen?
Yes, I can, and I was planning on it. Uh, to answer Mr. Bell's question, Freeman's will have control of the concession stands. They will run the concession stands, and for them to come and give us a part of the profit and make it stable, run constantly with, uh, good Cajun food, with the same menu or different menu, but the same quality of menu, they're gonna run it. I'm not saying that there isn't room for, you know, some of, like you were talking about, well, I got a group, and I'd like to do something. But we signed a contract with them, we are letting them run it. You would go to them, because I'm not, I, there's no, there's no double dipping in saying, hey, but every once in a while, I'm gonna... In other words, they're coming and approaching it as a business, they're staffing it, they, uh, it's just, you know, a sad coincidence. Mr. Freeman died. I went to the funeral home before I came here, and I talked to Ross and his, uh, sons and the nephew, and they're all excited to come. But, you know, they're making menus, they're looking at what they can do, and, and the younger Freemans are taking this on to run it. But they're looking at it, it is a business adventure for them, or venture for them. We do get a percentage. We get fifteen percent of their, uh, profits. But, uh, the way it's set up, you know, they are expecting that they would have a contract to run that, that, and they're making that commitment, because it is a commitment. I mean, they're gonna have to be open a whole lot more. In other words, it's not, this city runs, I'm not, I'm not knocking what the city does, but the city runs concession stands, and there are times that people don't show up, there are times they don't have the product, there are times they're like, well, all we're doing tonight is drinks and chips. You know, they don't have that option. In this contract, they, they gonna have to come and give us a professional, uh, concession stand that has more than, like we talked about last time, nachos, and, I mean, they need to bring, we are talking about it, and we're gonna talk about it in the contract as well, they need to bring their A-gram and bring, you know, quality food that I know that they can do. So, that's kind of the plan, is to contract with them and let them handle the whole thing, and the city would receive a percentage of the profits. Now, the percentage of the profits, uh, we have so much need at the park, we're spending three point six million, but we're not out of the woods. So, I planned on taking whatever profit that did come out of that from us and putting it right back into the ballpark in, in more improvements.
Could I ask a question?
Yes, let me, go ahead. Yes, sir.
Well, I just wanted to point out that the part of, one of the terms of the contract is, they have to staff one of the concession stands for all major sporting events. So, they're obligated.
No, they are. I mean, it's, it's, you know...
The city gets the money, but the city also can count on them being concessions available to draw the public to the park. So, that's a big deal, and the commitment's important. If you have private organizations scheduling different times, you don't know who's gonna be there and who's not gonna be there. And everybody's gonna want to be there for the big stuff when the sun is shining, you know, but we need to have somebody there no matter what.
And we talked about it in my office. I was like, you gotta come, you know, if it's one small baseball game, or if it's a big tournament or whatever, you know, you can't just pick that I'm gonna come when the money's good. You have to come all the time, you know? Sir?
I think, I think it's essential when you look at, at the rules and regulations, because, you know, organizations of this type in a, in a facility we run, and, you know, the Board of Health has to approve the conditions of cooking food, so you, you really want to have a professional organization with a contract and eliminate the city from any liability issues. So, I think, although we all like to see, you know, mom and pops go out and make money and do things, that, that's fine and dandy, but I think by doing the professional route, it's gonna maybe secure better quality of food, maybe in the long run, and, and possibly any liability issue from a food issue would, if we, you know, all intend to have really big crowds out there. So, I think it, it's gonna be a win-win.
Yes, ma'am, you had your hand up.
Uh, so, just one question, well, a couple of questions. One is, so, are you saying that if a, if a private organization has a, I don't know, big tournament or something, they are going to be there?
Yes. Freeman's is supposed to be there for all major events, and they want to, I mean, it's a business. They, they, they...
Okay, that's fine.
You know, what I liked about it was they were approached it as an opportunity to do what businesses do, to make a profit.
So...
They would make money there too, you know, I mean, they need to be there for everything.
So, basically, though, I just want to make sure everybody's clear. That means that if you have a big tournament there, you cannot sell, because people use, usually sell concessions as a fundraiser, so they won't be able to do that.
Not at the level that we're going for. In other words, the Youngsville, the Pep, the, the, we're trying to, we're not them, and I don't want to be them, but we do have to compete. We do have to be able to host tournaments and those kind of things. Like, if you go to the Broussard Park or the Youngsville Park, it's not, you know, it, it's run by, they sub it out the same way. It's run by restaurants, it's run by. So, we were taking that model, when Richard and I talked about it, we talked about, let's take that same model, because we are hoping to attract those tournaments, to attract, you know, visitors and people that spend the weekend here. So, it would be for them all the time, uh, and we're doing a one-year contract. We're trying them out as much as they're trying us out. In other words, you know, they could come at the end of the year and say it's too much, or we could come and say, you know, we didn't, we didn't get what we thought we were getting. So, we talked about that in my office and said, well, let's do a one-year contract and, and see how this plays out.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, there's a thirty-day out in here.
I know, we haven't, I just, I always call the attorney. I know you're not done.
There's a thirty-day out in this thing, so if you want to extend that, you could.
Yes.
You know, but either party can terminate it, so it's kind of an experiment.
It is, it is. Yes, ma'am, back to you.
Um, so, have we, and I can't remember, maybe you answered this question last time. I apologize if you've already answered. Have we determined who's responsible for the utilities for the concession stand?
We pay all the utilities, because everything's wired together. So, we're, we're not gonna break out the utilities. That will be, I mean, they're giving me fifteen percent, but basically, the concession stand, just like the existing concession stand, all of that is, you know, one electric bill that the city pays.
Okay, I just, that fifteen percent just went down, though, because now we're paying their utilities for it.
Yes, oh, I agree, I agree.
Okay.
That's why it wasn't ten, because all the other, all the other groups charge ten. And I said, man, I gotta get something, so I, and I told them the truth. I said, you know, the ballpark in Youngsville, the one in Broussard, both charged ten. I, I need fifteen, because I got expenses, and, and because we weren't breaking apart the utilities.
Okay.
Anybody else? Yes, ma'am?
Can we make sure that they have coffee or energy drinks at the concession stand?
Sure.
Because sometimes games are super early.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm taking that they have a customer?
Yeah.
That's good.
Man, I'm looking forward to Freeman's coming and experimenting, really, is what they're doing, because they're coming to a new venue, uh, with a new idea. I like Freeman's, I like crawfish, I like plate lunches. Maybe I don't have to say this, but I'm gonna say it. They're not the biggest name in food in New Iberia though.
Right.
They're not the biggest name in food in New Iberia. I mean, you got Bon Creole, you got, uh, so many other places that... I mean, when you say, when you say food...
Yeah.
You say their name, you think, you get hungry.
No slight to the Freeman's at all, but I tried Bon Creole first, and they told me no. Well, I mean, I'm just saying.
I mean, there's...
Because we did think about getting a restaurant, you know, well, well, we didn't, you know, that, that didn't work out.
So, that is, like you say, I'm saying that not to slight, it may be an opportunity for them to become the biggest name in food.
Yeah, yeah. It, it, it will, it will, my...
Not against that.
Yeah, me neither. Thank you.
Sometime I think we beat up the potential too much.
Yeah, right, right. I understand, I understand. You gotta, gotta give them a shot. Anybody else?
My issue's not necessarily with them. It's more of, there was a bunch of people could, we didn't give the opportunity to, because we didn't bid it out. I think I said that last time.
Yes, ma'am. And duly noted. Anybody else? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much. All right, five A.
Resolution number twenty-three dash oh-one, accepting change order number two for the Louisiana Pepperplex Sports Field Lighting Project and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Do you have a motion?
Move.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Protim Ricky Gonsal and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Morcott. Uh, see, Paul Allen is up here. Paul, why don't you tell us about it?
Sure. Um, this, um, this decision to accept this change order, the extension of time, is related to one of the contractors, there's three contractors on the job site. This is Dixie Electric. This was discussed at our last monthly meeting on the job site. Freddie and Richard were there. So, what's going on is, and, and please understand, the major portion of the entire project will be completed in June, which includes the concession stands, the, the ballparks for the kids. Uh, this is a component of it, but they're dealing with a major lighting supplier. And across the United States, there's a significant lead time for delays in materials, as you probably already know. And especially in the field of electrical, between generators and gearboxes and power poles and lights, it's just, they're just overloaded. So, this is what they're doing, is they're requesting an extension of time on, uh, some light poles for the project.
Any questions? Yes, sir.
I just have a comment. Uh, we've, we've done it in the past, where the time that we're having right now, some of the other construction or contracts have come before us and asked for similar, uh, change orders or similar requests. So, I don't see any reason why we should delay this and, and go ahead with it. So, I can understand what they're, they're dealing with right now, especially what, what we're all dealing with nationwide, so, thank you.
Anybody else? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. Five B.
Resolution number twenty-three dash oh-two, accepting change order number two for the Civic Center Marina Phase One Project and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Deidre Johnson-Reed and a second by Councilman Dustin Swear. Paul, tell us about this one.
Okay, this is, uh, the Civic Center Marina Project, uh, Phase One. And what, what this is involved in is, um, um, the state of Louisiana and the federal government requires that we put handicap accessibility to get to the, down to that level. And coincidentally, we're creating a new handicap ramp. It's a really tight site, but it does work. But whoever built and laid out the site initially when the building was constructed, they didn't really run the electrical lines where we think they should have been running. They kind of did some real strange stuff where they borrowed electrical lines. They don't follow pole to pole. They go in really crazy directions and turn at ninety degrees. The con, the electrical contractors scratching their heads and saying, you know, usually they do long sweep nineties to get things in place. It just so happened that, uh, we ran into one of those unknown electrical lines, and we have to relocate it, because we want the power on the pole. We don't want to discontinue that. And we also need handicap accessibility. So, um, I think it's a legitimate change order. It's, you know, it's two thousand plus, but it's worthwhile. We think it should be approved.
Any comments? Questions?
So, just...
Yes, sir.
Nothing can be changed, just additional cost to, to circumvent the problem?
Right, the, yeah, the, the handicap accessible ramp occurs where we need it to occur. Um, the line actually ran right through the handicap ramp and returned back away from it. And it's just, it's just a weird situation, but it was unforeseen.
May not be the last one you find.
Hopefully not. I mean, hopefully so.
That's funny. Anybody else? Then please vote your machines. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
All right, five C.
Resolution number twenty-three dash oh-three, authorizing the mayor to sign the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three pre-application packet for the State Revolving Fund, Loan Fund, Wastewater Facilities through the Louisiana Department of Environmental Quality for the City of New Iberia's wastewater utility.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mayor Protim Ricky Gonsal and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Morcott. Um, I'd like to explain this one. This is, we have all that sewer work coming, and then I found out about some low-interest loans that we could receive, and we could borrow two point five million, and the note is fifty-five thousand per million, so it's less than a percent. So, I have two veins of thought on this. One, if you remember from our budget, we were taking six million dollars from our nineteen sixty tax, which... which phased for sewer and many other permanent public improvements, and we were putting that into our sewer reroute and our big sewer project. Because as you know, we're spending a grand total of eleven-point-nine million on sewer this year coming. So, one, I didn't know about the money before that we could qualify for this, when I found out, I said, well, one, that's very cheap money. So we could, could, we could keep our two-point-five million. On the flip side, as I mentioned at the last meeting when we talked about the letter we received for the Dog Pound Services, that we might well one day, in the near future, have to build our own. So I thought, hmm, well, that's very cheap money, the sewer department can handle the note on that. So what if I needed to use the two-point-five million of our cash to build a dog shelter? Well, we could. So, we don't have to jump on it immediately, and I'm not saying we have to spend it immediately, but it was very cheap money, but there's a deadline. So if we send our application in now, in January, which Vince has already, you know, compiled stuff, if we get that going, then we'll get an answer probably as early as March or April. And that way we would know, hey, we have, we can take these funds, doesn't mean I have to, but we would be ready to. And I feel that that's prudent, we are about to go into negotiations, uh, on our dog situation, and it's all related, because I might well use the money for that. We received another letter from our parish president, uh, with an offer, okay, remember the last letter was, I quit. Um, this letter is much nicer, okay, so, and I don't think he meant it like that, it's just, that's what the letter said, and he prorated the bill. So I said, well, the man quit, okay, now, we would get seven kennels, but we can only put one dog in each kennel, and we have to furnish a dog catcher, a truck, and the cage. I got an old cage, hadn't looked at in years, but I kept it from the sheriff's department, it wasn't great, but it's, it's a cage. But we'd have to buy a truck, we'd have to pay somebody, which is new expenses, we'd only get seven kennels, and now the rate is fifty-five thousand dollars a year. Now, if you remember, from the nineteen-eighties, we had a contract that was twenty-one thousand for seven kennels. And then last year, in twenty-twenty, the parish president and I, we do get along, we talked, we raised the price to ninety-one thousand dollars. So we raised it by seventy thousand, with the thought, if you remember, Erica came and did a presentation, and the thought was, we're going to get better services, we're going to get somebody assigned to the city, we're going to pick up more dogs, we're going to really do something, so we agreed as a council to pay seventy thousand dollars more, and we did. Well, now they don't want our money, and they don't want this deal, and they want to go back to seven kennels. Well, my biggest problem with this, and like I said, we're going to try to negotiate, my biggest problem is, they service over four hundred dogs a year, so if you take four hundred puppies and you divide that by twelve, you know, that's a, that's a lot of puppies, divided by twelve, that's thirty-three-point-three puppies, okay, well, thirty-four puppies a month. Well, if I only have seven kennels, and we don't run the shelter, I don't know how long those seven dogs are going to be in there, I can only put one per kennel. So when I hire a dog catcher and pay somebody, you know, thirty-five thousand dollars, I guess with benefits, and buy a thirty-five thousand dollar truck and put a cage on it, what is that person going to do if they don't have a place to bring them to the puppy hotel? I mean, they don't have anywhere to put them. So in a week, you got an aggressive person, in a week, they could pick up seven dogs. Well, if they don't move those dogs and they stay there, well, we're going to have, you know, a month or two months that our guy's not going to be, or our girl is not going to be doing anything. What will they do if they don't have a place to bring them? So that's my big bone of contention with this deal. Would I take this deal if I have to, and it's on the camera, I don't care, yeah, but does it work? It really doesn't fix our problem. So we're going to be, have a contract, if it stays like this, that we will pay fifty-five thousand, plus thirty-five thousand, plus a truck for thirty thousand dollars. Plus, never forget, it, it's not counted in this, I don't know why, but from the health unit tax that our citizens pay, they are taking a hundred thousand dollars and running, putting that toward the operation of the shelter. But give that up for now, just say they've been doing that, that's okay, I don't want to spend a hundred thousand dollars a year and only have seven, seven slots. So my hope is to negotiate a better deal, and maybe get a two-year contract or something that at least I know I can hang my hat on, while we flesh out, we would have the money, if you approve this, so we're in a better negotiating stance, if we have a backup plan. And it's not so much that I need that to negotiate with the parish president, we need that for our citizens to know that, hey, we would have another plan. We can't just sit up here and say, okay, let's just take this, if we do this, this reminds me of the sheriff contract for law enforcement, that it wasn't good, but it's what we had, and, you know, people would say, huh, well, we got a contract, you know, it's not us, but it's our citizens and, and it's our dogs. So, I'm asking that we approve that money, but with full knowledge that we might use it for sewer, we might use it, we might not. We might use it to build a dog shelter, or if we don't do either one and we make a better deal, it's very cheap money and we'll, we'll put it to good use. So I would like to take advantage of it, or at least at this point, approve that we can do it. We didn't sign the papers yet, we didn't, you know, but know that I'm always looking for cheap money, and I'm always looking for money to make, and I always feel my, what's my little saying, new money should do something new, new money should do new things. But we've come a long way and done a whole lot together with the philosophy of get every grant you can, get cheap loans when you can, get bonds when you can, and keep moving. So, I, I'm open for questions, but I thought it was a good time. I also saw the newspaper last week that Louis, it's not just us, Louisiana is last in the fifty states of being dog-friendly.
Right.
So we, we definitely have a problem, uh, as a, as a culture, as a state, you know, we have an issue that at some point it's up to us to fix. Anyway, so I just wanted to give you an overview of why now and why, I heard about it, I, I called Jason Akers, realized we could do it, we're in a financial position to be able to do it, where we hadn't always been before, but I didn't realize that that money was that cheap and that it was, as I understand it, that easy to grab. So I'm done, and I'll open the floor to questions or comments. Yes, ma'am?
Can we just reiterate that we are still doing the major sewer project that will help out Acadian Acres?
Yes, oh, yeah, we got, we got the five million dollars from the state, we matching that some kind of way with this money or with the cash that we've already pledged. Yes, ma'am, your project's coming, and you've been very patient with that, and I'm working on your drainage project as well, that one's not quite there yet, but yes, your sewer project is coming.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Uh, Dustin, I'll just go around.
Thank you. So, mayor, is it safe to say, with the money that's being collected through the tax, well, the millages that's going to the health unit, and the fifty-one thousand dollars, so we'll be anywhere between the one-fifty and two-hundred mark before we even, if we decided to go into another contract? So, we'll be already there, like, before, before we hire someone?
Yeah, we're, we're at two-hundred thousand dollars now with this year's contract that, that basically, we said, no, Ma, it ain't happening anymore. But we were spending that much money when you counted both of them. We'll be doing that again, because the health unit money will still go, and this fifty, you got to at least add at least another thirty, that's eighty-five, and then I got to buy trucks. So, yeah, we, we'll, regardless of what we do, we are approaching two-hundred thousand dollars.
And the reason why I'm asking that, because I think the budget, the operations budget for the animal shelter is probably, uh, close to five-hundred thousand.
It's four-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand was last year's budget.
Almost half.
Yeah, almost half a million.
Right.
Yeah.
So.
Anyway you look at it, we're going to spend.
The, it's the upfront cost of really building the facility.
It is, it is, other than that, and, and, you know, I mean, I take on, that's my job, I'm not, I'm not complaining, I love my job. I take on more employees, more responsibility, you take on the fact that we all are in this together, and we have to run it right, or we're going to get complaints. So, you know, we all take on more responsibility, and the police chief is smiling at me because he's run a dog shelter, and he tells me what a bear it is to be nice, and that it is not easy, and that if we do it, we are taking on something that, you know, is a big challenge, uh, which kind of affects all of us, but, you know.
And you brought it up with the, with the whole sheriff contract, yeah, everybody says, oh, we have, we have a contract.
Yeah.
For the same time the citizens aren't getting the best bang for that buck.
I mean, I don't want to be a quitter that, you know, oh, I pawned it off.
Right.
By the same token, I don't want the parish, I mean, trying to be fair, I don't want parish government to have our problems and say, well, it's the city. Because, you know, if you don't run something and you're just part of something, you end up that it, it becomes this, oh, oh, wasn't my decision, that was the city. Or wasn't my decision, that was the parish, that's the rub of, of, of that kind of thing. Uh, but you're right, I mean, I, I just don't want to be a quitter and say, well, you know, I fix the problem best I can, we, we have a, no, if I can get a good contract and a good deal that buys us time, I, I would like to try to do that, I'm not giving up on that, but.
Yeah, you have, you have to continue, you can't just stop picking animals, you got to continue.
You got to have a plan.
If we do decide to do something in the future.
You got to have more than one plan when you're not in total control.
Okay, well, thanks for clearing that up.
Okay. Yes, ma'am?
Um, a couple of questions, one is, um, is it possible for us to maybe negotiate a similar deal that we have, like with the sewer plants, where we say, we're going to do a joint venture together, you pay half, we pay half, because we have half the dogs, is what they're saying. Um, and that, something for the long term, I mean, the facility, we just kind of have a joint agreement like we have with sewer, with the sewer plant?
Well, we only have that at one sewer plant, which is the Cotton Street Plant.
Right.
And we have a lot of issues. I'm not being ugly, they are trying, they're doing okay, they just blew some limits. Before that, they had to test with the minnows, and all the minnows died, and they're supposed to live, uh, we have some issues there. Uh, Vince and I tried when I first became mayor to go and say, we're going to take over that plant, and we're going to run it, because I had a professional engineer who knew what he was doing, and had already had quite a few years of experience by the time I got there, and they told me no. Uh, so, anything that is not, I, I'm not a big believer in that.
Okay.
I know that we have people that always talk about duplicated services and likes those kind of things, uh, he's sitting next to me. Uh, I'm not a fan of that, I think that when you take a job, you take the responsibility, and when you're going to be a city, you be a city. What I don't like is, we're two different kinds of government, you know, the parish, look, it's a struggle over there. They have thirteen boards and commissions, their money is divvied up in all these different pots, they don't work like us. I don't think you realize the beauty or the efficiency, the reason we're moving and getting stuff done is because we make those decisions and we run, okay? I'm gonna tell you a quote I stole today, "I am what I am because of who we all are," all right? This, this, the team makes it, they don't have that ability to move in that direction. They want to do something and then they have to go to a board and commission to see if they can get their own tax dollars back. It's just a different animal. So for me, I'm not all for, if I'm going to be the mayor and get paid to run the city, I feel like I should run the whole city, and I should take the responsibility, and I shouldn't say, well, I'm going to do this on half with this one and that one, because then you only control half of your destiny. So for me, I don't like that. Uh, the sewer, it's pay at the pump, you know, except for that one plant that was done a long time ago. What I like is the model of our new sewer plant. There's flow meters, and as my city attorney says all the time, he's coin-operated, those flow meters are coin-operated. You want to send some more my way, that meter's turning, and you owe me X amount of dollars, that's the fair way, run it like a business. So would I be willing to pay per dog, would I be willing to pay, you know, some other way? But then they need to take the responsibility, what, what I, the other thing I didn't read is, the city would be responsible for providing a law enforcement officer, animal control officer or agent, establish holding times and authorize release of such animals from impound. So they putting it on, they putting, they're asking me to run something, but only a little small part of it and not the whole thing. That's where you start running into the problem, when they trying to operate a no-kill shelter, if a dog bites a person, it needs to go down, that's state law. If it's vicious to another dog, you can, you can euthanize the dog. If it's sick, you can euthanize it. If you keep ninety percent of your dogs alive, I know this is kind of weird and off into the weeds, you, you're considered a no-kill shelter. If you kill more than ten percent of them, then you're not a no-kill shelter. So, we don't control any of that, we don't control when the flow of the dogs would leave, even if we had fifty percent. There's no guarantee, because it's their shelter, there's no guarantee that they're not going to say, well, yeah, you know, you got twenty cages, but they're all full, you know, because we don't run the day-to-day. So that, in my mind, and I guess it's, it's totally jaded from the police experience, but in my mind, I think that you, you, you do something, you take it on, you do it yourself, or you, you pay at the pump, basically. So for me, I'm a little different of just saying, yeah, let's go on half, I, I, I just think that's a dangerous move.
Okay.
Just my opinion.
So my other question had nothing to do with the Dog Pound.
Okay.
Um, when we do the work over in Acadian Acres, are we going to just fix problems or add capacity for future growth?
Well, it definitely will add big capacity, because we're re-sending all that flow over to the new plant. That relieves, relieves a whole lot of area, because we already had a developer come when I was maybe two years in to develop some property, and we had to tell him no, because the capacity wasn't right, and we had some issues and other things that we're going to take care of, but it will definitely increase our capacity and give us, because we can pump, once we put this system in, we can pump a lot of, a, a lot of product.
Okay.
Trump, you know.
Okay.
You know I'm always tense. Anybody else who hadn't spoken? Questions, comments? Yes, sir?
So, back to the, is there a state statute stating how many, how many dogs can we have per kennel? I thought there was more, I thought it was like two.
I, I thought you could have more than, more, I don't know for sure, but I thought you could have more than, like, you know, I go to Angel Falls and they have more than one, I go other places, they have more than one, so I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's one or two. I do think it's kennel size, if you look at the square footage of the kennel, if your kennel's big enough, you also have to make sure the dogs are compatible.
What I'm getting at is, so, if, in the contract, or what he's, what he's requesting, is if we have one dog per cage, but on, with his kennels, or say with the parish kennels, they might have two or three in one cage, to me, that would make sense.
Yeah, yeah, well, like I said, I'm going to try to negotiate something, but I just need to look at, have a plan B.
Okay, cool.
Anybody else? Yes, sir?
And, and we're voting on bar, bar this new money.
Right now, yes, we're voting on bar the new money, or applying for the new money right now.
And we're not saying we're definitely.
No.
Putting it towards sewer, or definitely putting it towards a dog kennel, we're just barring the money and we.
Yeah, and I will come, because it's very cheap money, and I will come back either way, as I have to, and as I would anyway, for us to, you know, decide on that together. Yes, ma'am?
I was just going to say that, um, I went to the animal shelter last week, and our kennels for the city are smaller than theirs.
Wait, come again?
Our kennels are smaller, like the city kennels are smaller than the parish kennels.
Yeah, that's why it's one, I thought that, but I, I wouldn't.
I guess that's why there's only one dog per kennel in ours.
Yep, yep, and we are, you know, I'm going to be fair with the parish, we have more, because of our mass, because we are the biggest city. We have more vicious dogs, we have more, although I like them, we have more pit bulls, we have more dogs that are aggressive than probably in other areas, because we're a tight community, we have almost half the population of the parish, we, we should have more dogs. But, yeah, we have smaller cages. Yes, sir?
I think, more, I think, just to clarify a little bit, this SRA money that we're borrowing has to be used to DEQ through wastewater, if we use it.
Yeah, yeah, no, we, we're, we're, we're going to borrow it and use it for sewer, it's going to happen, okay? But it frees up the money that, from the nineteen-sixty tax. All I'm trying to do is buy some leverage and say, that money goes to sewer, it has to be used for that. Now we got two-point-five million still in that nineteen-sixty tax fund that could do a whole variety of, it's building us some flexibility.
And we still need money for our sewer, right?
Oh, yes, sir, we, we will never not need money for our sewer. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am?
I just saw Mr. Vince, um, does he have an understudy yet, because I know his, uh, his days are limited.
You want to come up, Vince, he's all like, no, you don't want to, okay, uh, thank you, we are working on that. We, we have someone, we've interviewed a few people, and actually, we have someone that I, Vince and I are going to make an offer to.
Okay, good.
Because, you know, he has an app on his phone that counts the days down, and I think he's around a hundred and fifty days, so I need to move. Uh, we are actually, we've interviewed a few people, and, uh, I am going to actually make a call this week to see if that person is still interested and try to, try to make a deal.
Yeah, because we have a lot of issues, and I feel like they've learned so much from following him around.
Well, that they will.
Okay.
And I'm not losing his phone number after he leaves, because, uh, we're going to need some help.
Don't give him any more encouragement.
Mayor, let me rephrase that, per the way government operates, we would, we would never have enough money.
Yes, sir, you're correct, correct, and per our own system. All right, if there's nothing further, then I ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you all very much. Okay, five D.
Resolution number twenty-three dash oh-four, accepting capital outlay funding for Facility Planning and Control Project fifty-dash-ML-one dash twenty-two dash oh-three, and Street Park Planning and Construction, and Designating Jane Bro to act on behalf of the City of New Iberia in all matters pertaining to this project, as well as authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute any and all contracts or documentation in connection therewith.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Dee Johnson-Reed, and a second by Councilman Martin Lewis, and, and we don't really need this project. I'm so excited about this one, this is going to be a good project. Any comment?
Uh, I'm just excited, and, um.
Definitely.
I'm looking forward to when we sit with the architect to see what it's going to look like, so that we can put something out, let people know, and we have our groundbreaking.
Yes, no, I am, this is, this is going to be good, this is so neat in that neighborhood.
Yes.
Anybody else? Anybody else? All right, well then, uh, please vote your machines. Great, thank you, it's going to be a good project. Okay, uh, six A.
Introduction of ordinance number twenty-two-three dash oh-one, and ordinance approving contract between the City between the City of New Iberia and Menville and Associates Incorporated for grant administrative consulting services and authorizing the mayor to negotiate any and all documentation in connection therewith, and setting for public hearing on January seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three.
Do I have a motion?
So, move.
Second.
Motion by Mayor President Ricky Gosland, and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Markcott. Do we have any discussion or questions on this item?
They're just gonna be kind of on retainers, so that if we need to apply for a grant, they're gonna be available.
And he does our capital outlay, and if I see something else that he does, and he's a very respected guy, does a great job, and he went up ten dollars an hour, and I'm fine with it. It, it, it's a good deal.
Okay. This is who we normally use, right?
Yes, we've been using him for years. He has pulled back on some things that take, like, he doesn't like to do the sewer ones anymore, because they take three and four years. So, some of the road grants or sewer, big infrastructure that takes a long time, he pulled back on that. On the flip side, it freed him up to do even more of the things he likes to do, which is capital outlay, he could even help with a grant, he, uh, you know, he, he's, he's a handy guy, he, he, very, very wealth of knowledge.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. Six D.
Introduction of ordinance number twenty-two-three dash oh two, an ordinance amending section eighteen dash twenty-eight of the Code of Ordinances of the City of New Iberia relating to waiver land use regulations relative to permitting for mobile homes, recreational vehicles, or other temporary housing located directly adjacent to an applicant's damaged dwelling in the event of a declared gubernatorial disaster or emergency waived by the mayor on a case-by-case basis to allow for expedited delivery, and setting for a public hearing on January seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Marlon Lewis, and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Markcott. Uh, this is the ordinance that we discussed heavily a few months ago, we passed it, but then it said it needed to be something from the presidential side, and we've run into the issue with the tornado, that it, it's, it wasn't big enough of a natural disaster to be FEMA, so we needed from the governor, uh, basically, because he, in this case, just declared one, so while we saw we had an issue, that's the only reason we're bringing it back, is to amend it, um, to where it, it lessened it a little bit, and, and kind of eased us up to some flexibility, case whatever just happened with the tornado happens again.
And that would always come from the, the governor if it was
Well, he always, the governor does one, and then the president does one, but the go, it still has to come from the governor, I don't think we can go less than that, we can't declare our own emergency, so
Right.
I think it has to be the governor.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure there was no other
Yeah, I, I kind of looked to see if there was something lower I could do, but I think the governor is as, as low as we can get.
And they would, they would contact Homeland Security.
Yeah, we have to run everything through Homeland Security. The trailers for our citizens from the tornado that have been displaced has been, uh, I would not be exaggerating, uh, quite the process. We have four or five families.
Four.
There are four families that we're trying to place right now, and it is one governmental hurdle after another, not from us, but from everybody involved. But it has to go through GOSEP, it has to go through the parish. Uh, but there have been quite a few challenges and hurdles to try to make this happen. Just to tell you.
So, I guess, um, because we're going through this process, we can kind of create a template for the next time
Well, let's, let's hope there isn't, but, yeah, while we're learning, Laney's been very involved, Hillary's been very involved, and I wanted to get them involved, because, you know, long-term, we, we need to have a, a template and a system in case this happens again. I mean, it's caught us off guard, but it's, it's a, it's a good learning tool, because, you know, if we ever really get hit, I saw the microcosm of how this could be, not good.
Not good at all? Okay.
Anybody else?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
It's glad, I'm glad to know that only four families really want the trailers, that mean the other twenty, of the twenty-three, you know, just four need the trailers, or are gonna ask for, that the others are in places, you know, where they can, uh, live with a, a relative or friends, and, and, you know, basically get their dwellings together again. So, I'm just thankful for that, and, uh, for those people who are waiting on the trailers, just say, government does work a little bit slow, but they're coming, and, you know, as soon as we have them, you'll have them.
Oh, definitely, and we are in constant contact, and we have filled them in every step of the way, where the holdups are, you know, I mean, I want them to know, we probably, Joe's not finished calculating, we spent over sixteen thousand dollars in dumpster fees alone, okay? That's coming out of our emergency funds. We, uh, probably have two more trailers that, our issue is, we, we got on it right away, we knew we would get paid back, we just said, we gotta do this, this is our people, but we couldn't break rules, so we had other agencies, Cajun Navy, uh, Catholic Charities, bring the stuff to the road, and then we took it from there. We have two more mangled trailers that now need to be removed, so we're trying to find a group to help them get them close to the road, so we can pick them up. Uh, labor, we haven't even calculated that yet, but, I mean, we probably will have easily dropped thirty thousand dollars, easily, uh, you know? And I will let y'all know when I get to a total, but, I mean, it had to be done, because this hit in an area, you know, many of the, our citizens there didn't have insurance, uh, many of them had no way to pay for this, and, you know, the, the least we could do was, was make a fast effort, I mean, we were there the next morning and cleaning up, and the least we could do was get that done. When we heard about the trailers from the governor, I did think it would have been a lot easier, I didn't think that it would be as difficult it's been, but we are working through that, and, and it is good practice for the next one. I'm kind of like, uh, Councilwoman Ledbetter, excited that of the twenty-something families, you know, many of them found a place to go, some are still negotiating with the insurance company, and they're running, talking of weird stuff. In other words, you had insurance, here's what we're gonna give you to buy another trailer, but you have to buy newer than a two thousand ten or greater, but the money you have doesn't buy that.
Right.
And there are just a lot of instances that you're just watching people, some people don't have, you have to elevate it, you have to have an elevation certificate, you have to pay your utility deposits.
You gotta put a skirt around it, too.
You have all of these code issues that, you know, you gotta put a skirt around it, all those things are happening, and, you know, they're calling us and saying, well, can't you pay for it? But, I mean, we, we can't use tax dollars for that. Um, and every other disaster I've ever been involved in was declared by FEMA, so you had money. So, money came, and you could just, you could just do whatever, because you were getting reimbursed, or, you know, the federal government was paying for it. This is a very odd one that, you know, it's not happening, but, anyway, we, we're working through it.
Yeah. By the way, I did get a call from a citizen who was trying to reach someone about, uh, providing a family with an apartment for three months, rent-free, no utilities, and they didn't get a call back, so I just say, when we get those calls, we gotta make sure we return them, because we lost out on opportunity.
We have returned any one we saw like that, we actually had one today that, uh, we're trying to hook them up with the families, because we had a group that wanted to put some money out. And I let them know this morning, when I got the text, that, uh, look, these people can't pay their hookup, they can't pay, you know, just my people that are trying to get in trailers, if they had some cash to help them with that, it would speed it up, so
Right.
I know we have tried to hook up anybody we can that, you know, wants to help.
Right. It's just, this person was frustrated, because they didn't get a call back, and, and so I said, I would mention it, you know, to us, so that we make sure that everybody, it's not just us, though, but there's other government officials, too.
Right.
We need to all return those calls.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
I just want, they called, I didn't, I wanted to make sure I understood, they called to
To tell me that they had, they had been calling, trying to get this, uh, get a, uh, someone into an apartment for three months, free rent, free utilities.
They were gonna give it to them?
Yeah, for three months.
Oh, they had an apartment?
They had an apartment available, they were gonna let somebody stay there for three months, rent-free, you, no utilities, and they couldn't get anybody to call them back, so they end up renting to someone else, but they just, they called me and wanted to tell me about that, so I don't know why me, but I, you know, I guess they're in my district, so I just wanted to mention it, because that's important for us to
Oh, definitely.
return those calls, especially if they were trying to help.
Any other discussion on this item? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. Seven A.
Kevin's ring to present monthly budget to actual report until November first through November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two.
Evening, everybody.
Hello.
We haven't visited in a while, so I thought I would do something for y'all.
Yeah, we miss you.
I miss you, too, man.
Said we.
Oh, we, oh. I'll leave that alone. All right, so all we've done in the past is, we went over the summary, like, for general fund, we didn't go through each item, and we just, is y'all okay with that? If you have a question, please stop me, and I'll try to answer it.
Can we just ask her questions, or do you, you're gonna go down the whole list?
I, um, open if you just have questions, I'll answer your questions.
It's up to you guys, I don't, don't make decisions based on me. I always have questions.
All right, well, whatever the council wants.
I mean, nothing, nothing really, just tell us anything that sticks out, but
Yeah.
We're so early in the year, there's only three items that are above
So
in the double digits.
Well, can I ask a question? So, where's the money coming from in finance, the additional money, because we had twenty-seven in the revenues?
Well, if you take a look at finance, Parks and Recreation, and Public Works.
Yep.
Those all receive a, um, ad valorem tax. I just record it all at the beginning of the year, and then we adjust it for the uncollectible at the end of the year.
Okay.
So, those are showing a hundred percent of their, um, a portion of the property tax.
Okay, excellent.
And I run my department above par, so I bring
That's the real reason, right?
Please don't encourage him.
Any other questions? Go on, what?
Uh, nonprofit allocation?
Yes, ma'am, nonprofit allocation. The seven thousand, bringing it to forty-one point eighteen percent, that is for the Tesh Museum, we pay it all upfront, and the others, we pay them upfront, too, but the only one we've paid so far is the Tesh Museum. So
Okay.
We don't pay it equal amounts each month. They send us a bill, and we write them the check for seven thousand, which has been agreed upon.
Okay.
Got a question, so, being, being that we discussed it tonight, blue line camera, um, the revenues generated, are they just gonna come into the, the budget as, under the police allocation, or are we gonna see these numbers, what's coming out, what's exiting, or how are you gonna handle that, that revenue stroke source?
If the money is gonna be spent in the police department, it's gonna go into the
That's what I'm thinking, yeah.
Yeah.
So, we have it, um, so they should just wash each other out.
Yep.
I'm sure that's the answer he wants, too.
That's why he stayed for the, the whole meeting, no.
I'm all, we, we don't spend much money.
No, we don't, no, chief, we don't. Next item?
Next item? Any other questions?
Any other questions or comments? And like I said, it's very early in the year, we're not goofing around, there's almost nothing on this sheet, I'd just like the public to know, we are responsible about our budget, but, I mean, it's, it's brand new.
Yeah, so.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Item eight, Councilman's remarks, uh, Councilwoman Markcott.
Okay, so, registration has started for Evangeline Little League, uh, if you want to register children, you can sign up at tshq dot bluesombrero dot com backslash Evangeline Little League. Also, the soccer registration has started, you can register at iberiasoccer dot com. I did have questions about Pelicans, do we do that now, or no, or you wait for your meeting Friday?
No, you can, you can
Okay. Mr. Tommy, you wanna come answer some questions, just like, what's happening?
Their podium.
I just, my phone has been gone since we sat here.
I thought she was gonna ask me a question.
I just hijacked your
You opened it up.
Yeah, I did, I'm, gotta take my
Okay, so, um, are you guys shorthanded right now, this week and last week?
Well, last week was terrible with the twenty-degree weather, uh, people, some of the people not showing up, then people that did show up by Friday, we had a few people missing that were sick, but it's not the problem.
Okay.
Some, you have some equipment issues also
Okay.
uh, with twenty-degree weather, something with the air tanks and different things that happened, but that's all not really the problem, we, we get down to what's really going on. I've been dealing with SNUC directly for the last week. The last six days, I've been working on just Iberia for about eight hours a day, and we have a plan, I called Freddie with, that we'll do some adjustments on.
Okay.
Like, Monday's like a real big day. Tuesday taters off, and Wednesday, Thursday, Friday's like some easier days with the house couch, the way they are.
Okay.
They've been moving some houses over, but like, Monday, when the freeze set, the equipment went, few people don't show up, when you get like a seventy percent of the day done, the next day, you start in the morning with thirty percent, so it's just snowball till Friday.
Right, okay.
And also, we're gonna address the issue of not working after dark.
Okay.
That's a big safety issue with us.
Gotcha.
I think we have a great plan here. I brought it to Homa, and we're gonna work it with the headquarters.
Okay.
Then we'll meet with Freddie, but Freddie and I, we talk every day, or text every day, SNUC talks every day.
Okay.
And then we've been looking at everything, and let me, uh, clear everything with Homa. I don't wanna tell you something that I didn't clear yet.
Okay.
I think they're very helpful, but, uh, I think it's some simple solutions if we get the help.
Okay, gotcha, all right, and I just want to ask, because I'm getting the text messages as I'm sitting here.
Monday went well, yesterday, they finished up, and then, uh, he was struggling a little Yesterday, they finished up and then, uh, he was struggling a little bit till about six oh five.
Okay.
You know?
And they didn't, he already sent me the text, they didn't finish everything that they, in your area you were asking about before the meeting, they'll be back on that first thing in the morning.
First thing in the morning.
And they catching it, and by the end of the week, you know, that's, that doesn't satisfy our customers.
Exactly.
You know, when you're used to, I put my can out and they pick it up at such and such a time, I get home from work and I pick my can up, and you get home from work and your can's still out, even if they pick it up at eight o'clock at night, that's a problem. So, but we, we've been communicating and I think, I think between us, we have a plan and we realize what the issues are. I don't own the company. And neither does Tommy, so we have a meeting on Friday with the owner and we're hoping to.
And I'll try and get this, I'll, nine and five percent sure I have the CEO of the company here next time, next week, but
Okay.
in two weeks.
Okay.
To address you.
Okay, yeah. And my area is very densely populated, so I don't know if the solution is to move some of them over to one of the easier days.
Well, Monday, whatever it is, the day is the biggest day, then Tuesday's the biggest day, then it taters off, so that's why you notice, like, like, like yesterday, we did it all, but like into the dark. Today, he didn't finish fifteen percent of it, so then he catches up by Thursday or Friday. But that's not okay because Monday, Tuesday, whoever district that is, is terrible.
Yeah.
You follow me?
Yeah.
If you're Monday and Tuesday, it's not a good district representative right now.
Yeah, okay, I was just curious.
But give us, give us an opportunity, uh, floating our ideas to Freddie.
Okay.
Then bring the CEO involved, and then in two weeks, I'll have him here.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Thanks, Tom.
I'm done. You can have your meeting back.
Okay, alright, that was a good, uh, trip. Alright.
Booker, Mr. David Bruce.
That's right. That's exactly right. Thank you, Brooke. Yes, sir.
Yeah, man, um, first of all, I wanna wish everybody, uh, Happy New Year. I wish you, pray that you have a prosperous and safe New Year, twenty twenty-three. Tommy, did, did I hear you say it's District Two or District One is, which district you say is not good to be?
No, 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 Monday, well, it was Monday and Tuesday routes are the biggest days. So if there's like, like, I'm not blaming the weather, but you say it's a bad day Monday. It, it takes till like Wednesday, Thursday before they all caught up, so on Monday or Tuesday, you gotta get calls the last two weeks. You follow me?
Got you, got you.
But the Friday guy might not be getting none because they all caught up by the time we get there. So we're gonna try and balance that off, loud is equal, and then also have an extra, you know,
Yeah.
extra equipment or something.
They heroes at the end of the week.
I thought you said District Two, that's why.
Get your brain rubber thin.
But with Brooks at, you know, like that's the Tuesday, so we drug two weeks in a row until Wednesday. You follow me?
I do love what you have.
On Monday and Tuesday, though, believe it or not.
So you get both days.
Some sick days, yeah.
Yeah, so, Councilman's remarks.
Back to my Councilman remarks.
Yes, sir.
Martin Luther King holiday coming up. We won't meet before, we won't meet until after, because Martin Luther King is on the sixteenth, right? January the sixteenth? When is it? Yes, January the sixteenth.
Yeah. Right.
Birthday was the fifteenth. They always celebrate it.
So we don't meet on the seventeenth?
We meet on the seventeenth. That's gonna be after.
Okay, that's after.
It'll be after.
I don't know if they have any festivities. I didn't hear anything.
I haven't heard any.
But over the last few years since COVID, they've been making it a day of service. So, uh, if you're thinking about where event is happening or what event can I attend, uh, attend some service. Neighborhood cleanups, uh, check on the sick and shut-in, uh, plethora of things you can do on that day if there's no events to, to attend. Also, I would like to, uh, wish a couple of my church members, uh, happy birthdays, uh. Ms. Rosetta Diggs, uh, Dr. Diggs's wife. She'll be making ninety-nine, God willing, on, I'm sorry, one hundred. She's ninety-nine now. She'll be making one hundred years old on January the ninth. We did a little celebration for her at church Sunday. Uh, she, she was a trailblazer. I, I didn't know her story. I knew Dr. Diggs's story. And her brother, Mr. Newton Thompson, uh, he made ninety years old. We did a little celebration for them at the church. Uh, he made ninety years old. He's still active. Real, real estate guy, just a, you know, a, um, role model in this town. I wanted to wish them a ha- happy birthday, uh. And that's, that's all I have.
Councilman Bressard.
Very big, uh, businessman. Mr. Freeman passed away. We wanna all give our condolences, and, uh, we don't wanna forget people that helped in this city too. Johnny and Kathy Endes. It all comes back to the mamas and papas who raised us. They, Johnny lost his mama this morning, which is my first cousin, which is my aunt. So, uh, and Mr. Papa over there. Garbage cans on Weeks and Julia, a lot of phone calls about maybe get them out the street when they finish dumping them, put them in the yard, please. We have, but we can't run on those streets. They're narrow already, so y'all doing a good job. This is a few little fundamentals that we know y'all catching up on, but we get the calls. You know, so we know y'all gonna make it in the long run, so we appreciate everything y'all trying to do, but a little tightening up on some things. We appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Just, um, I'm, I'm really excited about this council and this leadership of what we've done so far and accomplished as, as our term, but I'm, I'm really more excited in twenty-three coming forward because I know we worked very, very hard on a lot of Harper money, and I think we're gonna start seeing some of the fruits of our hard work and, uh, and I think our constituents are gonna start seeing it moving forward and, uh, I'm really excited about the future and the things that we're gonna do to, to serve our constituents.
Thank you.
I just want to announce Neighborhood Watch. Uh, we're gonna have the first one for twenty twenty-three on January the twelfth, six o'clock PM at the Slime and hope to see everybody there. And Happy New Year to everyone. Hope it's good and prosperous for us all. Thank you.
I wanna announce that we're having the Downtown Neighborhood Association meeting tomorrow at six PM at the Slime and Theater. Um, we hope you guys come out. We're gonna be planning our projects for twenty twenty-three. Also, there's gonna be a homeowners class or overview with the Louisiana Housing Corporation on February second. At, I think it's five o'clock PM at the Slime and Theater, and it's for people who, we're really trying to target people who think they can't buy a home. People may have lower income than they think it's, you know, you know, required for homeownership. There are programs out there that are available so that you guys can buy a home. We hope you'll come out and learn about these programs because in order for us to revitalize or rebuild our communities, we have to get rid of a lot of these vacant lots, and the way to do that is to have people buy them and build. And so we wanna rebuild our communities. We need people to get ready to build homes in our communities so that they become vibrant again. The Am Street, uh, community, we really wanna focus on that one. We're gonna have a great park there. We wanna bring young families back to that area so that these kids can take advantage of that park. And also, um, I don't have a date yet, but, uh, Turner Industries is gonna be hiring soon, and so they've agreed to do a job fair in the Weston Park. So, um, once we get the date, we're gonna have some pre-job fair activities like resume writing, and we're gonna help people practice interviewing. So kinda get ready. Um, as soon as we have those dates, we'll let you know, and I hope that people will come out, apply for these jobs and, um, and get hired, and so, you know, then you can buy the land to build a house and rebuild the, the city of New Iberia. And then the last thing I would say is that, um, uh, Councilman Lewis said about Martin Luther King Day being a day of service. If you haven't been out to St. Matthew's Cemetery in a while, it's also a great day for you to go out and clean around your loved ones' graves. Hopefully, some of us will be able to go out and finish some of the work we had, uh, we started out there. The weather's just been terrible. Every time we scheduled something, the weather was terrible that day, so. If that's one of those, you know, days where it's a really nice day, please go out and clean around your loved one's grave. Let's keep this graveyard nice and neat, uh, for all of the people who are resting in peace there. Thank you.
Sir.
Yeah, uh, I wanna wish everyone a Happy New Years, and it's amazing how we, we're already into our third, starting our third year as a, a council here, and that's crazy because they say government moves slow, but time sure does fly.
You're right about that.
Other than that, that's it for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, my condolences to the Freeman family and the Endes family, and, uh, I wanna wish everybody a Happy New Year. On another note, I have some crime stats that, uh, Police Chief shared with me before the meeting, so, uh, I'll compare this year to last year just very quickly. Last year, we had thirty shootings and twenty-five were solved, and we had eleven homicides and six so far have been solved. This year, we had nine homicides and eight have been solved. We had twenty-five shootings and twenty have been solved. So our solve rate on our homicides this year is eighty-nine percent, and our shootings, our solve rate is eighty percent. Well, that tells me that community policing works. That tells me that we could not do this without the community, so we are getting help. As you can see, one loss of life is too much, but our homicides and our shootings are both down from last year, and our solve rate is, is exceptionally high, and that is a direct result of the community working with our police department. So, uh, we just got those, kinda compiled them today. I just, uh, as the chief sent them, I, I thought that I would share that information.
And it should improve, but our new crime cameras wants to improve clicko, right?
Well, you know, crime cameras will help, uh, the speed cameras will help because they got LPRs on them that you could catch somebody. I just saw, uh, kinda in the same vein, where saying, I saw the parish president of St. Martin Parish, and they're putting cameras to, uh, their boat landies are being vandalized. The tire dumping thereafter, you know, I mean, he had a list of things and I was like, okay, that's us. Some playground equipment that's been vandalized and spray painted, some gang graffiti, you know, all kind of stuff, that they were basically touting that they were about to put cameras up, so I mean, that's a help. The other thing that's a big help, the chief alluded to it, knock on something, we are, uh, have hired some additional officers and we are fast picking up to, to being in that zone we wanna be at of, of how many officers we have employed, so that has picked up. We've been very lucky that we've had some, uh, post-certified officers apply with us and want to come to work here, uh, so that's a good thing and that, that certainly, the more manpower will certainly help. So, uh, that's that for tonight. Uh, our next meeting is January seventeenth. Look at those Stormwater surveys on the, uh, website, and we still have properties for sale, uh, with Civic Source, and with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Thank you.